Hey, the meeting is called to order. This is the regular town council meeting for Cave Creek, June 16th, 2025. We've had a silent roll call and we have the pledge of allegiance. Vicky, would you lead us? Thank you for that fine rendition. Public announcements, the town council had executive session going over the town manager's performance today, and due to exemplary performance, the town council has voted, just four people got in here, to give the town manager a 10% bonus. It was an open meeting, but there was nobody in the room, so I just announcing that so everybody knew what happened. And Grady, I'd like to say that, and I've just summarized, the town is very happy with the 16 months you've been here. We look forward to the future, and you've really done some good things. So thank you for being here with us, and you've earned it.
Thank you, Mayor.
I wrote my notes for the public announcements on the other paper. Okay, well.
This is the last meeting.
Oh, that's right. This is the last meeting until September 2nd, at which time we'll start meeting on Tuesdays at 5:00. And, but we will have, if we need to have any business that needs to be done, we will call a special meeting and get the town's business done. There will be no lack of attention if the town needs to get something done. We will get it done. Anything else? That's it? Other announcements from council? Okay, the town man, oh, excuse me, called the public.
David Phelps.
Hello, Mayor and Council David Phelps here again. Today's a little bit different. I need to announce the passing of Tom Irvin. Tom said he would help me out if I hit this spot. We have a number of things that I'm gonna need your help sooner than I thought. Yeah, yeah.
Come on, Pappy, get over here.
These are not Lee notes. Okay, that's his idea of preparation. I think what David Phelps was attempting to communicate this evening is, for those who don't know, Tom Irvin, he was a former legal counsel, former legal counsel for the office, for the town. And he was here during a kind of an instrumental period in the town's history, which involved the acquisition of Spurcross Ranch. He also was the one who can take credit for rescuing the sheriff's office out of the semi-trailer and getting them in more proper office space, which is the building, including this structure here, and off to the north of us. David's notes also have the other key component to the Spurcross preservation, which was the annexation of the land that was north of Morning Star, which was formerly Maricopa County. We needed 51% of the property owners in that area to come into the town to give the town the authority to actually decide the development of the land up north, the 2,235 acres. And there was a group that went out every night after work, which involved the clerk, and the engineer, and the attorney, and myself and others. And we went door to door out there in the community and attempted to convince them to accept a 25-year development agreement, so they would be grandfathered with their existing property activities and come into the town. So to Tom's credit, he really helped get that through in six weeks, and we were able to get the 51% of evaluation.
I think I can take some.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Never given Harrison an open mic, I guess.
Jesus. Can I get that minute back? Town Hall, he's the one that suggested and acquired this property and built Town Hall here where it exists today with this town chambers. We had been renting the building across the breezeway there. He dealt with the bid bust of the sewer plant that was on Rancho Manganah Boulevard, and eventually got a new sewer built over there on Rancho Manganah, and got the surrounding property owners to agree to terms, because it required a 300-foot setback easement, because it was being built in a residential area. And he was able to get those property owners to agree to terms. The sewer didn't go so well in that location, because we were not ready to enforce our own ordinance when it came to the restaurant owners, and we let them pollute our sewer with grease traps. And with that, we ended up getting sued and paying the price for not enforcing our own ordinance. He was also an author. This is one of my favorite books of his Arizona Boundary Law and Adjoning Landowner Disputes.
It sounds exciting.
Yeah, well, it's interesting for Cave Creek, though, isn't it? I mean, it could be, it couldn't have been delivered to me from a better person, and it couldn't have been more relevant for the community that I was deciding to grow up in and be in. Thank you for your patience. Thanks again, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
No additional speakers.
Okay, town manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, just to report back that last week, there was a government day that was hosted by the 2025 Leadership Academy. Both the mayor and I were featured speakers. Mayor Crane of Carefree was also one of the speakers. And so it was a great way for us to impart with potential leaders or future leaders in the desert foothills area, and possibly maybe even future council members and other politicians. It was a great, great opportunity for us to share information about how Cave Creek and Carefree operate. And so I really enjoyed that, and also meeting some of the students. Also, just wanted to highlight that we also have our very own deputy town manager Teresa Riza, who is also one of the participants in this year's Leadership Academy, as well as Beau Larson, our communications director. So we've had a number of people in the past. I believe Marshall Stein has been a graduate. I believe Luke might have been one of the first classes. So it's great. It's, we get a lot out of it as well, because our folks who participate in that also network and are able to help people in the future, if they ever have questions about local government, or if there are a particular issue in mind with Cave Creek. So anyways, that's all I have. I just wanted to just share and report back to the council on that.
Thank you, Grady. We have a presentation this evening, the Cave Creek Museum update on the local landmarks project. And it looks like Marcia DeAlessandro is our speaker. Welcome.
Thanks, sir. Good evening. My name is Marcia DeAlessandro, on the board of the Cave Creek Museum. And I'm also the chair of the local landmark project. And I just took it over about a month ago. Oh, thank you. And so I just wanted to give you a brief update as to where we were. So just want to quickly go over our approach, what we're planning on doing for 25-26 plan, and where we are today, and if you have any questions. So the committee, what we wanted to do is get the members of the business and the community involved, because I think before we, it wasn't with the community members. So it will be, the committee would be a member made up of Luke, myself, Fran Booth, and Jen Miles, I'm sure many of you know her, and Maria Elena Brizzo. So we're keeping it kind of small, and just to get more of the businesses involved. And the other thing we wanted to do is integrate with the visitor center, to see if we could maybe come up with a passport system, to promote a lot of the businesses that are currently in the local landmark project. And our first, I'm trying to get everybody together right now. It's a little difficult because of the summer. So hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll be all able to get together. And one of the things we want to do is, I know the first year, there was 15 sites. The second year, I believe there was none. The third year, there was five. So in speaking with Luke, we think we want to target three. We're gonna identify five, and then work with those businesses, do our research on those various sites, and then come up with a recommendation for three. And we thought we would have them do the ceremonies when the height of the visitors. So we think we'll do one in October, one in January, and one in April, to get more people involved in there. We're also going to use Fran Booth, as I mentioned before, to do our marketing, and work, as I said before, with the visitors beers. I haven't met with Nina yet, but, because I was away on vacation, and try to get some ideas as to how we can promote the local landmark project. So basically, what I did was, I met with Brian to kind of get some information about the current website, and what we need to go, maybe some improvements. Then I met with Jen Miles for Tech4Life, to see how we can transport that to another, to their, so that they can host it for us. And I'm waiting for a, an estimate for the level of work that needs to be done. And I've already submitted the expenses for Fran Booth, for the marketing that occurred in the last, for the last five sites that were, went into the local landmark project. And then we've identified all the committee members, and as I said before, we're trying to coordinate our first meeting. Do you have any questions?
Nice slides.
Well, I just want to say it's a great program. Congratulations for taking over. Look for really big things from you, so.
Oh, thanks. Well, I'm very excited, and hopefully it will, we'll start working, you know, over the summer, and then identify the sites.
Thank you, Marcia. Okay, next is the consent agenda. We have no proclamations, do we?
It's, you know, I'd like to recognize that the new president of the board of the museum is here, Pat O'Brien. Pat, just stand up so we can see who you are.
Okay, the next is a consent agenda. On that, we have the council discussion, possible approval resolution number 2025-13, Reuben Pryor authorized signers, and adding new authorized signers for the town's safety deposit box with BMO Bank, approval of the April 28th, 2025, special town council work session minutes, approval of May 5th, 2025, regular town council meeting minutes, and approval of the May 19th, 2025, regular town council meeting minutes. Is there a motion for approval, or does somebody need more information?
This is a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, all those in favor? Opposed? Meeting carries seven, motion carries seven zero. Next to here is the, we're going to convene a special meeting for the purpose of considering adoption of the final 2025-26 budget. This is one meeting out of half a dozen or more. So the, that meeting is now in session. And so we're going to recess the regular meeting and open this special meeting.
So we have gone through a long process to get to this point. We started internally back in December on this process, so it's quite a ways to go through. Thank you, Brian. So on the expenditure budget amount, so here I have broken out, because it is a significant amount for the state land purchase in this budget. So I'm showing, prior to adding the state land amount, and so it's really an increase of only about $207,000. The state land amount of the 18 million that we put in, so that brings the total from the 57.6 million to the 75.6 million. So that 18 million provides us expenditure capacity if something was to arise where we were going to move forward with this. There's, if we are going to move forward with the state land acquisition, there will be costs that would be incurred during this particular fiscal year. How much of a purchase would happen, maybe, maybe not. It really kind of just depends upon what the approach is that's taken with all of this. So that capacity is there. It's also available if something else needs to change. So if something changes as far as like our water resources, that there's something that we need to move ahead sooner, because those aren't budgeted in 26, they're in future years of CIP plans, so it would provide us capacity for that as well. The water resources are also something that we're basically needing to do some debt financing to be able to include those costs. So same with the 18 million. The changes, so when you look at from the operating budget compared to the capital improvement budget, there's some changes there. Part of it is the pavement management program was in the CIP budget, the capital improvement budget. We are moving that to operating budget, which is really more from an accounting standpoint, a more appropriate place to put that. There's also in the operating budget, the award of a grant, so 1.4 million for one-time pavement management. So that's in addition to the other projects that we're doing for the pavement management. We did receive awarded on that. And then also, the 2.4 million for the 50-50 share of the regional fire station that's being added into this, this particular budget. Of that 2.4 million, it's about 780,000 of that number is a one-time cost, because not that we're paying for any of the construction of that new station or anything like that, but helping to get the new staff ready for when they do open, because they have to go through an academy, and it's very expensive to go through the academy. So looking at the numbers here, so there was a few small changes from the tentative budget adoption. So the numbers are pretty close to what was there before. Looking at what the beginning balances are for the year, so for fiscal year 26, starting off with 31.8 million is our estimate, estimated revenues of 38.1, the estimated other financing sources, so that is related to debt financings, including the, I adjusted it to 17.5 instead of the 18 million with the change in the resolution at the last meeting, where we're putting 500,000 of the TPT money towards open space. So I reduced that amount of the debt financing. Then the way the formula works is we back out what reserves that we need to have in place at the end of the year, so 8.4 million. So that means that there's resources available of 91.9 million with those expenditures of the 75.6. That means there's excess resources over and above the, what the expenditure amount is, of 16.3 million. So essentially, we could still have a balanced budget if our budget was another 16.3 million higher. That 16.3 million of the excess resources, and then the reserves, that would put us at a total fund balance as of June 30 of 24.7 million. I did a reconciliation here of the fund balance changes. So the beginning balance, starting with the 31.8, going down to the 24.7 ending balance. So this is, the several items in here are, I like to equate them to, if you were saving money to send your child off to college, when it came time to send them to college, you would use that money towards what you saved it for. You wouldn't say, I can't touch that money, it's in my reserves, I need to come up with other money to pay for my child to go to college. You would actually use it, and your balances personally would come down. So that's similar to what several of these items are. So the first one, we're assuming that we would spend the balance of the open space money, which would be about $2 million. We may not spend that. It depends upon what occurs with the land acquisition. We're assuming that we would spend down almost $1 million of our capital reserves that we have set aside, and assuming that we would spend the balance of what is left, projected to be left in the water infrastructure fund of $1 million. And then there are subsidies to the utility funds of about 4.1 million. So this is one of the things that is pulling down our balances, is the, doing those subsidies. And if it were not, so the net of all of that, everything else is a net increase to the balances of about a million. So we're spending down balances that we set aside to send our child off to college, essentially. But we are also subsidizing the utility funds, and then after that, we still have a million dollar net. So I didn't really change anything here on this slide from when we looked at tentative, the first line here. So this is what the budget amounts have been over the last three fiscal years. And as you can see, we've been well under what the budget amount was. The orange line is what the actual expenditures were. And then this kind of greenish line is what total fund balances were. So you can see the green line is well above what a whole year's worth of expenditures are. So we do have a very strong position with our fund balances. And then I have a table here that shows what the differences are between the budget amount compared to what the actual expenditures were. So the, going from about 16.1 million in '22, '24 was about 24.7 million under budget. And as you can see, 40%, 44% of the budget was not spent. So the changes that we made from the tentative budget to fiscal year '26, there are a couple of the CIP projects within the utilities that we are deferring to a later year. So that brings what was adopted as a tentative cap of 76.1 million to 75.6 million. And yes, we asked Sean to look at all the CIP projects, and he's looked at it now, like, I don't know, five, six times or whatever, and could definitely get the sense that he's starting to get a little nervous about going any further on that. Looking at expenditures by type, so this pie represents the different categories of that 75.6 million. As you can see, the capital improvement projects represent about half of what the budget is at 38.4 million. The next biggest piece of the pile, pie is just ongoing costs that are not personnel-related. Personnel costs are about 10% of the pie. As far as outstanding debt, and this is utility funds, so total debt amount of 24.3 million. I did add on here a calculation of what does that mean for the town, what our debt ratio is. It's not really something that's typically done in government, but I know a lot of people like to see what does that equate to, because it makes sense to them from a business perspective. And so 18% debt ratio is pretty low.
What is the denominator, 18% of what?
Of the assets of the town. So again, no changes on this particular slide. The debt service amount for each one of the utility funds that is in the budget for fiscal year '26 is listed there. The payoff of the current debt, and with Cave Creek, it's showing 2053, but that's because of the Phoenix Interconnect loan that was recently entered into. After 2028, the 2.6 million in debt goes down to only about 700,000. And then after 2030, it goes down to 646,000. This is based off of current debt. This is not any new issued debt. With the deferral of the couple of CIP projects, I did update this particular slide. This is listed for the capital improvement projects in descending order of the amount. So the land acquisition, that's just really just set up as one project, 19.6 million. But then we get to Cave Creek Water, which is 16 projects making up 13.6. Of that 13.6, the lion's share of that is going to be finishing up the Phoenix Interconnect. And then each one of the different ones go down quite dramatically. Wastewater's got nine projects, adding up to about 1.6 million, and so forth. So there's 39 projects listed for fiscal year '26 at 38.4 million. On the revenues, so the debt financing at 30.5 million is the biggest piece of the pie here. Without that, really, the next biggest piece of the pie really is our sales tax, our TPT revenue. This really is a big part of what runs the town, is the generation of those monies. The next largest piece of that would be the charges for services category for utilities for all those monthly service fees. The state shared revenue is 3.6% of the pie, 2.5 million there. We did just get today the latest numbers from the League of Estimates, and it's not much different than what I have here. And they also provided some information of if Sandton Valley incorporates what that might do to us. And it really was a fairly negligible impact on us. It was about $8,000 difference is what they were estimating. Looking at the general fund, and looking at the structural balance of the fund, so there's the legal balancing of the budget, but then there's also a consideration of the structural balance of ongoing resources versus the ongoing costs. And ongoing revenues in the general fund for fiscal year '26, it was 14.8 million. Transfers from Spurcross, 1.6 million. So we had changed that in the last meeting, where it would go to pay for Spurcross expenditures, and then it would go half million to open space and the remainder to the general fund. So it gives us a total of ongoing resources of 16.4 million. The ongoing costs, so expenditures, 11.8 million, a small amount in debt service, transfers to the streets fund. We do not expect that HERF money will ever be enough to cover all of our streets costs. So that's about 2.1 million balancing there. And then the new rodeo grounds fund that we had set up, because we wanted to be able to track what was going on with the rodeo grounds, and treat it more like an enterprise fund. And yes, it's going to need some general fund subsidy, because it will probably never be completely self-sustaining, but we want to be able to track where it stands. So ongoing costs, 14.1 million. So that means we have a positive net ongoing of 2.2 million. Comparing that to the one-time amounts budget in the general fund, so I've got listed on the left-hand side, the one-time costs that are in the budget, and then offset by one-time revenues of a million. So there's 5.8 million, which is a, basically a drawdown on general fund for one-time purposes. The placeholders for the contingencies that are in there, may, like, can't tell you whether or not those will get spent. Sometimes they do get spent. Sometimes they won't get spent at all. So it just kind of depends on what comes up during, during the year. But on the right-hand side, if we look at it without the subsidies to the utilities, because there's 2.9 million for a wastewater subsidy, and 1.2 million for a Cave Creek water subsidy. So the net ongoing from the previous slide of the 2.2 million, the net of the one time, if we're not doing subsidies to the utilities, would be 1.6 million. So we would actually do a net accumulation to the general fund of 600,000. It's just that those amounts for the subsidies to the utilities really put some, some pressure on the general fund to cover those costs. We are working with the consultants on the rate study, and so we hope to come back to you in a few months with some information to be able to move forward with those rate adjustments. And, um, so we hope to come back to you in a few months with some information to be able to move forward with those, uh, rate adjustments. So, um, with the, um, general fund, the reserves and restricted balances that are in the budget. So there's an operating reserve of $3 million. That's based off of 25% of operating expenditures. We also talked about setting up, um, in the general fund, operating reserves for the other funds that don't have the money to have set, set up their own, um, reserves. So that would be the streets fund, the, uh, utility funds and the, uh, rodeo grounds. So that's 3.1 million. We're just starting up with an, uh, equipment replacement reserve and that is 43,000 there. So, um, that's based off of IT equipment primarily is, is what that number is. The, um, very small amount for the Southwest Gas Capital, um, that until, um, we know whether or not that they're going to have any expenditures. We need to keep that set aside. And then the, um, Desert Hills, um, cash loan, uh, because they are in a deficit position. We're not doing subsidies to Desert Hills, but because they are in our pool of our cash and investments, they have a negative position in that, and that's estimated to be about half million. After these reserves and restricted amounts, the amount that would be unrestricted available in the general fund is estimated at 7.3 million. Looking at the utility funds, so for Cave Creek Water, um, looking at that structural balance again. So ongoing revenues is 6.3, ongoing expenditures, 4.5. And we do have a small amount in there for major maintenance projects. So the net ongoing for Cave Creek Water is a positive 1.5, almost 1.6 million. Looking at the debt service based off of the debt service amounts that they are right now, 2.6 million. So after debt service, it's actually a deficit of a million. Um, I do have a footnote there that in order to balance the fund, um, it requires 10.9 million of debt financing and 1.2 million of transfers from the general fund to help cover both the capital improvement and the portion of the debt service cost that's not covered. On the right-hand side, so that, that almost 1.1 million of the net after debt service, the, um, accumulative amount of what rate increases would need to be to, to cover that would be 17%. And, um, but in the last version of the rate study, we were looking at, uh, debt service amount of 3.9 million. So, um, based off of what it would take to, uh, pay, uh, be able to cover that amount, it would require increases of 37%. We will have again, updated information on those, uh, once the consultants have updated the, the rate study. Desert Hills Water is actually in a, a pretty good, um, spot where they're at. So ongoing revenues, 4.1 million, ongoing expenditures, 3 million and major maintenance projects, about 200,000. So the net ongoing is a positive 875. Their debt service right now is about a million. So it puts them at a negative 135,000 after the debt service. Um, and in order to keep the fund balance, um, it requires 866,000 of debt financing for CIP costs and then, um, the 502,000 cash loan from the general fund. In order to cover that 135,000, it really only requires a 3% increase in rates for Desert Hills. So not a lot. The, uh, current debt is, um, expected to be paid off in 2028. The debt service amount in the rate study for the new debt was estimated at 970. And to cover that amount would be a 2% increase. So, um, Desert Hills is in a fairly doable position to get to where they need to be.
How, how did you, how did you calculate the, uh, obviously the improvements we're making to Cave Creek system benefits Desert Hills too? Is this after we have, does this cover the cost, their, their share of those costs?
Yes, yes. Desert Hills has had substantially higher rate increases over the last several years than what Cave Creek Water ha- has. So that's part of what's helped put them in a better position. For the wastewater fund, so ongoing revenues, uh, 1.6, ongoing expenditures are 2.1. And then major maintenance, about 300,000. So just the net ongoing by itself. The other two had a positive number there. This one is a negative 784,000. In addition, there's debt service of about 1.9 million. So the net after debt service is a negative, uh, 2.6 million. To cover that amount, um, it would require rate increases, cumulative rate increases of 165%, which we all know is not really doable. The, um, debt payoff would be 2029. The debt amount, um, from the last rate study was estimated at 620,000. So once they get through the current debt and move on to that, that brings that 165% increase required to really only requiring 87%, but that's still quite hefty. In order to have the fiscal year 26 balanced, it does require 1.2 million of debt financing and 2.9 million of trans, um, transfers from the general fund to help cover both the CIP and the debt service plus the gap in the operating. Any questions?
A, a comment, uh, we'd set the objective of having the wastewater system, cover all their operating expenses some years ago. And that was a, uh, what has happened to expenses that that is no longer happening? Ben, you, you probably can't answer that now, but I'd like to see that, uh, coming up. It, it appears to me that the, a, a look back at the expenses of running the wastewater system some years ago compared to now may give us some insight into where we should be looking at expense control.
I suspect that they were assuming that the half cent that was going into wastewater would continue.
Yeah, right.
And so they were probably counting that as covering operating costs. That would be my guess.
Yeah, since I was part of that, I, yeah, we, we had always, uh, planned on having the half cent sales tax in there to cover it, but, uh,
We'll definitely take a look at it and get back to you on that.
I have a quick question, Sheri. What is the actual percentage increase in the operating budget from FY '25 to '26?
That increase is, um, 28%, but as I had indicated, so there's less being shifted over from the, the 18 million is not in the operating budget. Um, so that includes the cost of shifting payment management from CIP over to, um, the operating budget. It also includes that one-time grant, um, with the 1.4 million and, and additional payment projects. So there's, some of it's just a structural change in the accounting and some of it is significant one-time cost.
And what, what were those again? Just as a reiteration to the audience here.
Um, so
Could you put that one, it was one of the first slides that you started off with, and it actually showed that we were really only about 100,000 off, a difference of 100,000 from the previous year on the operating expenses.
That was in total prior to the 18 million.
Right.
So, so the, um, increase, so the, the eight million, so included in that is 2.1 million of reallocation of payment management out of CIP into operating budget. 1.4 million for one-time payment management grant funded. 2.4 million, uh, increase, um, partially one-time costs, um, but largely ongoing costs for that regional fire station.
So $8 million is equal to a 28% increase?
Yes.
So the pavement management portion of that should, uh, should, when we get, when we catch up, after we caught up on the pavement management, that should go away in, in some, in some another couple of years.
The, what, that number, that large number, yes, but it will still be doing preservative treatments and lower cost maintenance activities. But you're right, a, a big chunk of that will
We're at a peak right now.
And it's just, we, um, we were carrying it on in the budget as basically a, a capital cost. And it's not unless you're constructing a brand new road or, um, so basically it's, um, shift in philosophy really is most cities have what you would call major maintenance like this to be carried in your operating budget and on your capital budget. This is a, I think this is telling though, if you look at the subtotal and you just go across as, uh, the finance director indicated, um, that's really what it really is because there's no money or anything backing up the 18 million. So it's a really modest increase from one fiscal year to the next.
Okay. Other questions from council? Comments? Okay, we, we'll have a public hearing on this, so we'll convene the public hearing, open that up.
David Phelps?
David Phelps, Cape Creek resident. So I need to understand what we're doing with the 2.7 million dollars that we found that was shown on April 3rd in relation to our budget. You're making the statement that Desert Hills is in great shape, that their expected revenue increases are in the two, three percent range. I dispute that because I think they still owe us 2.7 million dollars after we get our audits done. And that's going to be more than 3%, I believe. Uh, I'm not arguing with her. I'm just making this statement. The, um, I'm not arguing with Sheri. I'm sorry. Uh, the other thing I'd like to do is thank the council members that voted for the $500,000 preservation fund. It's long overdue and it was time to do it and I appreciate your efforts and I thank you all for doing that.
Thank you.
No additional comments.
Okay. So the public hearing is now closed. Uh, we will, um, do, do we close the special meeting before we vote, Bill, or do I, do we devote? Vote now? Okay, okay. So we'll, we'll take a vote then, voice vote on the, uh, on the final, um, uh, the council discussion, possible approval of resolution number 2025 dash 14, adopting the fiscal year 2026 final budget. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The special, uh, the hearing is closed, the special meeting is closed, and we are reconvening the regular meeting. Moving on to item number three, which is council discussion, possible approval of a deed of gift for a non-motorized trail easement located in parcel 216 dash 29 dash 011A owned by Desert Foothills Land Trust, who is represented here tonight?
So we have with us, uh, planner Eric Baker. Eric has just been promoted from associate planner to planner, so I'd like to at least congratulate him and he will be doing this item tonight.
Thank you, Grady, and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. It's great to see you all again. So with Luke currently out of the country, he has delegated me the responsibility of presenting this agenda item before you all tonight. So to give a brief summary, um, a property owner directly adjacent to the Black Mountain Trail is preparing to conduct driveway improvements, which will interfere with a very small portion of the overall Black Mountain Trail. Um, and in reference to that map up there on the screen, that portion identified in red is what is need to be, needed to be relocated, which is approximately 250 feet in length. And in looking at that map, just to give a little bit of reference, north is facing up. So if you were to hike up Black Mountain, you'd be moving from top to bottom of the screen. Um, and that segment is about one eighth of a mile from the official trailhead. The trailhead being where that local landmarks plaque was recently placed. With Desert Foothills Land Trust owning a parcel directly to the east of the impacted portion of trail, staff later contacted DFLT to identify a suitable alternative trail location to move the trail away from the proposed driveway improvements. The proposed new alignment for the section of trail is identified in blue. And again, that would travel through that, that parcel owned by DFLT. Um, the DFLT board voted unanimously to approve the dedication of the trail easement during their board meeting back on May 27th. Lastly, this project would have no costs, the town and all costs associated with the construction of this trail are to be incurred by that adjacent landowner. And the town will also be utilizing their preferred trail builder for the construction of this trail. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Cynthia?
Uh, is the property owner who is initiating this change, is that an existing home there or a lot that's, uh, available for sale there?
Um, I don't know the specifics. Um, it's, that is a, all I know is a owner that owns four lots up there and he plans on developing them and then selling them individually.
Okay, thank you.
No, no more. Tom?
I'll, I'll put this in the form of a question, but as someone who has walked the Black Mountain Trail frequently, I think there's a lot of scree that's coming down on the trail. And I think, is, is that because the homeowner needs to, uh, have that construction? And the second part is, this is a question, wasn't there a piece of equipment that, that fell down there a number of years ago because of, it's so narrow? No? Okay, I might be wrong. Can you speak up?
It was right at the very beginning of the real trail. It was, I wouldn't even say 50 to 100 feet up where it went on. And that from the picture, it showed, I'm confused just a little bit because I used to hike it a lot. So I was, I might question, but there's a square is exactly, why does he need that section? Isn't there an easement there in the getaway?
Let's, let's hold that, let's hold that for the, we'll have a comment here a second and you can come up to the microphone where, until we get it recorded. So let, uh, let's finish the council questions here. Any, any further question?
Yes.
Joe?
So I was out there this morning hiking up Black Mountain and, um, are we talking about the guy that built the, um, house they originally moved it for? So he's got a gated drive. That's where you have to make a left where the trailhead starts?
It's very close to that location and the reason he has to use, um, part of this specific portion, it's actually a patent reservation, which Hal can maybe explain what patent reservations are. But that is, uh, his legal access is, uh, that patent reservation, where that red, if you pull up that map again, where that red section of trail is, it's actually town right of way. So that is his legal access to access that property. The existing driveway, um, isn't wide enough, uh, to meet the engineering standards of our ordinance.
So he compromised with us. He took his land and the land trust helped us out. He's going to build the trails.
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions from?
Just one, one more. Uh, what is the timeline for the, moving forward with the trail construction?
Um, yeah, so the property owner already has their driveway permit submitted. So once we get that permit going, um, and maybe can maybe clarify this a little bit more, but it should be, uh, within the next few months, I would say.
Thank you.
Okay, a public comment?
Vicky Preston.
Did, did you turn in the, in, in their back? I'm sorry, I don't know your name. Did, did you want to speak? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Vicky Preston. I'm the president and CEO of Desert Foothills Land Trust. And in continuing with the great partnership we have with the town, we are pleased to offer this trail easement. Interestingly enough, this five acre parcel was actually donated to us as trade land. So it was actually to be sold and then use those proceeds for conservation. But when we merged with Black Mountain Conservancy, we took on the mission of protecting the huge shade. And so the board decided to take that and turn it into a preserve. So five acres, not a lot to do with it, um, but this is the perfect opportunity for it to be used for access for trail and to keep everybody safe as it goes through, removing the trail. So we're really honored to be able to do this for the town and continue the great partnership. So any questions?
No, our appreciation, Vicky, and the whole Desert Foothills Land Trust.
Thank you.
No additional.
Additional questions? Okay, so we are ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Uh, I move to approve, uh, deed of gift of non-motorized trail easement located on parcel 216 dash 29 dash 0111A owned by Desert Foothills Land Trust.
Second. Okay, uh, you had the motion, Cynthia, so you can make your comment.
Since I've used parts of that trail, uh, for the last, uh, 40 years or so, it's nice to see the trail maintained well and available to town residents and improvements needed to accommodate the, uh, construction and the private property owners' rights that have that right to easement. So it's a, a good forward solution, uh, for both private property and for the land trust and benefits of town. Thank you for bringing it together.
A lot of people come to Cave Creek to climb Black Mountain. It's, uh, greatly used. It's a great, uh, view from up on top. And, uh, Vicky, thank you for working with us to your ends and to the ends of the town as well.
Other comments? Seeing none, uh, we're ready for a vote. All those, uh, in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it seven zero. Uh, Vicky, thank you for the great partnership and your leadership. We We partner on things, seems like every year, and it really is a good partnership. So thank you to the land trust. Next on the agenda is council discussion possible approval authorizing the town manager to execute an agreement for professional audit services with CWDL, Certified Public Accountants, for the fiscal years ending twenty twenty five through twenty twenty seven with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms. Sherry?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. So we are here to look at a professional audit services agreement. There are statutory requirements that we must have a financial audit. We must have an audit of our HERF monies, the highway user revenue money that must be used on the streets. And we must have an audit of our expenditure limitation report. So those are the minimum requirements of what we must do. Additional items that we have requested in the RFP that we issued was for preparation of the ACFOR, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. A single audit when we meet the requirement for fiscal year twenty five, and this is a federal requirement. For fiscal year twenty five, if we have federal expenditures of seven hundred fifty thousand or more, then we must have a single audit. Fiscal year twenty six, they have increased the threshold, so it would be a million or more. We are not anticipating that we would qualify for a single audit for fiscal year twenty five. So I think we'll not have one this particular time, but the next time around. We're also asking for the auditors to do the preparation of the expenditure limitation report. We're also asking for preparation of a PAFR, a Popular Annual Financial Report. So there was an example in your packet of one the Town of Paradise Valley does. There are so many different ways that places do these reports. It is intended to be a much more user-friendly look at our financial statements and where, where we actually are on a financial position status. And so that is something that has not been done here at Cave Creek before and something that we are looking to do. Because I'm sure you may remember for those who were looking at the ACFOR, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, the last time around, it's a pretty complicated report. So most, most people can't just pick it up and go, oh, now I understand where the town stands. Also, the special audit, the council has requested of the utility funds billing and revenues, we included that in the scope. We also asked for just a quick look at what the role of the audit committee is. I've been here almost a year and so far, just from my own personal experience of what I've seen. Everything that the audit committee done has been things that really could just be done by council. So I want to see what value add that can be there. And then we just have a generic of other services as may be requested. So if something else comes up, another special audit or some consulting type project, we could reach out to the auditors for that. The recommendations of the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, related to procurement of audit services. They do recommend a multi-year agreement, at least five years, because there's a lot of startup costs that the auditors incur in the first year. And if you do one-year agreements with them and change auditors on a regular basis, then they're going to hit you with all of those costs in that one year and then you're going to incur them with the next firm as well. It also helps with some continuity and minimizing some of the disruptions, because it can be very disruptive having an audit done. Also, GFOA does say that mandatory auditor rotation can be counterproductive. So for places where there aren't a lot of options for audit firms, when they have a firm that is not familiar with governmental accounting requirements, they tend to be substandard audits and it can be pretty significant what those are. There, I haven't seen stats lately, but I know it's been pretty substantial, like the last time I saw like substandard audits were like around thirty eight percent. So you really want to have a firm that is specialized and understands the public sector aspects of an audit. And one of the things they do say is, in order, if you need to retain the same firm, you could rotate the engagement partner and the senior manager. We have been with the firm that we previously had as our audit firm for fifteen years. So significantly longer than the five years. Feel like it is a good opportunity to take a look at new auditors and get a fresh set of eyes on what we have. They also suggest soliciting proposals from all qualified firms. I did reach out to all the known firms that deal with governmental auditing in Arizona and did not receive proposals from a couple of them, but the other six we did. And they also, GFOA recommends that the primary factor in selecting an audit firm is the ability to perform a quality audit. So we don't want a substandard audit happening. Price, they're saying should not serve as a sole criteria, but you know, we do want to look at price. We don't want to ignore it, but it should not be the primary consideration. So reviewing the proposals, we had a team that consisted of the town manager, the administrative services director, our accounting manager and myself. And the four of us reviewed the proposals, we did interviews of shortlist of the firms and unanimously recommend CWDL as the new audit firm. The criteria in the RFP that we had published was that the audit firm needed to demonstrate that they understood what our needs and operational requirements are and have the experience, resources, qualifications of not only the firm, but the people who are assigned to the audit. Because you know, there's turnover, there's new people coming in, we want to make sure we have experienced people on our audit. Making sure that they have relevant experience similar to, to ours. So we did look at some of the references that they had, did they have utility funds and, and such. We also wanted to make sure that they understood what the scope of the services were that we were requesting and what they are offering. And just generally, you want to make sure that they're complying with the requirements of the RFP and, and then also proposed fees and compensation is a criteria, not the primary criteria, one on a list of six. So CWDL Certified Public Accountants is a regional firm with an office in Mesa. It is somewhat new in Arizona, however, the people who do the public sector side of the audit have significant experience with a firm here locally that is one of the top ten. So a particular firm kind of went through a little bit of a transition, lost quite a few people, several to this particular firm. So it's, we are picking up very, very strong individuals in this. They have a significant focus on the government sector audits. They, in the proposal, they said they will have the partner onsite in person. The individuals that are proposed, they are certified public accountants and some certified fraud examiners included. They are the only one who actually talked about transition for new clients to new auditors and their approach at being able to help make that a smoother transition. And they are one of the few that do not charge additional fees if we have questions that come up during the year. This is a list of who the engagement team was that was proposed. So Dennis Mashkey as the infield partner with twenty years of audit experience. Richard Gillespie would be the infield lead manager with over twelve years and so, and so forth. You can see on the list here, significant amounts of time, even with the senior associates, eight years and five years time that they have. So this is a strong team. On the next slide, I have a summary here of the proposals that we did receive. And as you can see, CWDL was the lowest cost. But that was not the primary reason why we were choosing them. They, as I mentioned, it's new firm in this area with people that are existing from this area, but they are looking to basically gain a client list. And so I'm quite certain that that's why they were offering the prices that they were offering. If you look at the top line, which is just the annual financial audit, and you can see some variation in what those prices are. At the very bottom on the total line, you can see every one of those has some sort of footnote about potential other costs involved, except for CWDL. So they are promising that that is the amount, the maximum that they would charge. So the request in the RFP was for three years and then two additional one-year extensions for up to a total of five years. This is what the amounts were that were proposed by CWDL. And as you can see, the top line there on the annual financial audit, very modest increases over the three years. And many of the other costs are flat and not changing. So if council does approve this, this agreement with CWDL, we have in the works, ready to move forward with the presentation to the audit committee of the audit plan on Thursday, June nineteenth at four P M. And it would cover the audit plan for both the financial audit for fiscal year twenty five and the special audit. Any questions?
The past firm for audits, did they submit a bid for ongoing services?
Yes, they did.
Okay, so they were one of the groups listed there.
Yes.
And how does the current bid compare to what we've paid in the past for audit services?
It was a little higher. So within the trajectory of where they were at and their continued increases over time, but yes, it was higher.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, public comment?
I have no one wishing to speak.
Okay, so we are ready for a motion then. I'll make it. Move to approve authorizing town manager to execute an agreement for professional audit services with CWDL for the fiscal years twenty twenty five through twenty twenty seven with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms. Second. Hey, sounds like you're very thorough. I want to compliment you on the presentation. Seeing that kind of economic analysis really makes this an easy decision and with the experience level, just wonder how you got them so cheap. You must have been very persuasive. Get that level of.
They wanted our audit, they wanted our business.
Okay.
And I have worked with some of these individuals before, so I've
I do know that.
They know what it's, they know what it's like working with me.
No, I think it's, I think it's money well spent and I think that the more competition we have, the better results we're going to get. Other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you.
Next is the council discussion possible authorization of the town manager execute a software subscription service agreement for budgeting software with ClearGov Incorporated for a three-year service term from July one, twenty twenty five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight through the buy board purchasing cooperative contract number six ninety two dash twenty three.
Okay, thank you. So I want to talk a little bit about just the basics of budgeting software. So there's really two different categories. There's the preparation of a budget, the amounts and the requests, things that departments submit. And then there's the production of a budget book and the compilation and all the various reports that go into it. So with the preparation, there's various components there. There's the operating with the base budget, the revenues, there's supplemental requests, which is a different, different feature within budget softwares. There's personnel budgeting, which is another feature within softwares where it'll calculate all your benefits based off of the type of position that it is. And then capital improvement budgeting is also kind of its own thing with the multi-years. So each one of those are key components of what we would look for in budgeting software. With the production of the budget books, so it includes taking all of those, putting them into some sort of format of reports to look at numbers in total, but there's a lot of narrative information as well. So with the department sections, it lists what the goals are for the year, what their accomplishments have been for the past year and what some of the performance metrics are and, and targets for the, the budget year. And then there's a variety of other narrative sections when we get the full budget done. There's things that GFOA recommends be included for their award program, things like are we complying with our financial policies within our budget? What are we looking at as far as long-range forecasts? A whole, whole host of, of things that go into that. From the research that I did, what I found as far as the history for Cave Creek on budget software. So currently, we use a system called OpenGov. We have jokes around about all the different names of GOV, so Luke's been implementing SmartGov for the permitting. We are using OpenGov, we're wanting to go to ClearGov. Gets a little confusing sometimes. On October second of twenty twenty three, council approved a subscription agreement for OpenGov. OpenGov is intended to handle both of those sides of the budget prep plus the budget book production. There's been a lot of issues with using the software. There's been trainings and staff still struggle with the software. There are a lot of workarounds, a lot of things that have not been able to get implemented. And there have been things where it's working and then the next time we go in, it's no longer working. So it, it has just been a lot of things that we've struggled with. We did at a recent conference talk to budget manager from the city of El Mirage and explained like what our process is just to be able to create the project sheet for a CIP project. So in the budget book, there'd be a sheet for each individual project and the look on her face was like, you do what? So we expect the new software to be a lot simpler. Previous to OpenGov, the town was using Questica and FH Black for a system called Caseware. Those were within the town manager's signing authority individually, the two different softwares. So I believe the intent was that Questica would be the budget preparation side and Caseware I know is only budget book production side. And so my understanding is that was never fully implemented and had difficulties even rolling it out to departments and asking departments to fill out information in a spreadsheet to be able to put into the Questica system. And then as far as I can tell, previous to that, it was really Excel and Word is essentially what was being used. With ClearGov, so it handles both of the sides of what we're looking for, the budget preparation and the budget book production. There are some other features that we may want to consider in the, in the future that we are not including in this agreement right now, but digital reporting. You may have seen at some places where it's not just a PDF of a budget, but it's has a lot of like digital features in it where you click on things. There's a transparency tool, so currently the town is not set up with the transparency aspects that a few years ago, quite a few years ago at this point, the state legislature said either you have to have a transparency option available or you have to have an ACFOR posted on your website. Well, the town chose to have the ACFOR post on the website. The transparency side is for the public to be able to search our transactions. The statute says for anything five thousand above, a lot of places say it's more work to filter out things that are less, so they just put all the transactions out there. So that is not something that we've been doing, maybe we want to look at it in the future. Another module that they have is related to reporting of the strategic planning and reporting related to the capital project status. I was a bit surprised to find that the ClearGov is endorsed by the National Association of Counties. They have a, a program that they call Edge. I did not realize that they were doing this. So this program, they look at lots of things, not just software. This particular case, budget software, they looked at the software analyzed and compared to others and they actually endorsed this system, which I didn't realize they did that. We did do an onsite visit out at City of El Mirage. We did do an onsite visit out at city of El Mirage. They had several people from their staff available, including, I felt was very, very important. Their public works director handles most of the capital improvement projects for their city, including utilities. And so he was able to communicate with staff on our side that deal with capital improvement projects. The, they said that there's very limited of any workarounds that they do with the system. And I very pointedly asked the departments if they were happy with it. Because typically you'll find that departments are like, oh, it's budget time. I don't, you know, it's, it's not what they normally do on a day-to-day basis and what they, you know, enjoy in their work typically. And so just doing budgets is not all that fun for them. But when the software makes it difficult, then it's just worse. And they actually were very happy, departments are very happy with the system. And they are very happy to the point to where they're not doing things outside the system, unless there's something really complicated going on. But most years they do all of their work inside the system. Here's just a list of some of the places that the ClearGov is at. So as I mentioned, El Mirage, their city of Yuma, town of Prescott Valley, Yuma County, Queen Creek, a few others, Bullhead City, Casa Grande, Wickenburg. So several on their list. What we're looking at doing is using the purchasing cooperative buy board for this acquisition. It would be a three-year service term on this subscription from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028. The cost is actually lower than what the current software is by about $5,000. So 38, 760 plus tax for the annual subscription amount. And there is one-time setup costs where they would do a lot of the work to help us get set up and rolling of 17,280. As far as the strategic plan, so there are quite a few things under fiscal sustainability related to this, so the reporting, operational efficiencies, technological initiatives and collaborative partnerships. And then there's an action item for enterprise-wide software. And then also there is in the strategic plan, innovative and high-performing organizations. So this helps to meet that as far as providing resources that employees need to be able to, to perform their duties and their, their roles. Any questions?
Questions? I have a few.
A quick one.
Okay, go ahead.
You mentioned a lot of cities that used it?
Yes.
Your previous town, Sedona, did they use it?
No.
Okay.
I wish they did.
Okay.
Integration with Cassell, we're going to continue to use the accounting program?
Yeah, so the accounting program will not change at this point in time.
Is it integrated? I mean, do they talk to each other and the numbers come across without staff intervention?
So it would be very minimal intervention, but there would be a little bit. So it is really just to be able to bring in data as of a certain point in time. And that's really all that it's used for.
Okay. How long will it take you to implement? When would you expect this to finish?
So we would use it for the next budget process. And actually I asked them about, could we finish up the fiscal year 25 budget book with all the other narrative sections and everything in it? And they were totally okay with, yeah, we could, we could help you get that book out, which is due by September 15th. And I told them that we wanted to be ready to go for departments to be able to, to, to be able to roll it out to departments in October. And they said that shouldn't be a problem.
The final one is, why would you not implement the capital project reporting portion? We, we don't have any reports that I'm aware of on, on capital.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. And, and yes, a lot of municipalities will have something on their website that talks about the, what CIP projects are in progress, what stage are they at? Are they in design? Are they in construction? 50% complete on construction, whatever it might be. So at this point, this is, this is what we're prepared to roll forward with.
I'm not talking about timing, but, but it would be nice to have some kind of capital management program. We know where we are on budget and, and timing for to completion for a capital project.
And I want to pay for a subscription we're not using yet.
Okay, yeah, I'm not. Keep it in the back of your mind.
Yes.
How easy is it to modify and add those?
It shouldn't be hard at all.
Okay. I assume there's an extra cost for each module?
Yes.
Other, other questions? Public comment?
My apologies, no public comment on this item.
Okay, so we're ready for a motion.
I move that we authorize the town manager to execute a software subscription service agreement for records management software with MCCI.
The wrong item, sorry, Dusty.
Sorry, I tracked that. I move that we authorize town manager to execute a software subscription service agreement for budgeting software with ClearGov Incorporated for a three-year service term from July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2028 through the buy board purchasing cooperative contract number 692-23.
Second.
Too bad OpenGov didn't work. I'm glad you found one that other people are happy with and you seem to be happy with.
It's kind of mine, it's, we're making, we're doing this once every year. Hopefully we get the three years out of this one.
Yes.
Other comments from council?
I think, I think the stability of staff and having, not switching staff and then switching software. I think there's a commonality here that we're seeing. So I think this is probably an average right now that, that Sherry's achieved. And she's working towards exceeding an average of one year per finance director over the last five or six years. So.
Sometimes it hasn't been one week.
But anyways, yeah, it was unfortunate because the implementation last year was occurring the worst time you can possibly do it, which is during the budget process. And then the finance director was out on extended medical leave who was supposed to be overseeing it. So it's just a disaster from the get-go last year.
And yet the town kept on rolling, so. Yeah, but your, your comments are exactly right. Okay, other, any last comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And we are on to
Thank you.
Number six, which is council discussion, possible authorization for the town manager to execute a software subscription service agreement for records management software with MCCILLC.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Okay, so I am before you requesting a different software, and this is for our records management system. The product that we are looking at is a document storage platform that also can manage and automate what we currently have. And it's called Laserfish. The company that I, we are looking to go with is MCCI. And they would be providing all the training and implementation of the program. So the, currently our internal efficiency and productivity, we are currently using Excel spreadsheets to maintain all our records. And and so this would definitely drastically improve our efficiency for staff. It will also allow a lot more security. Staff internally will be able to search items without having to wait for me to find them for them. It will also increase our external customer service and transparency. So there is a public web portal. It wouldn't be something that we would have up and running right away because we would want to make sure everything is in the system correctly. But that would be something that we would have in hopefully the near future. The other part with this is besides streamlining our public access, it would also streamline our public records request process. So this does integrate with the current public records request software that we use. It also will help us be compliant with our state retention for our records. The state does require us to get rid of certain records within a certain period as well as retain some records for extended periods of time or forever. The program itself will be able to be programmed so we can indicate which records would be permanent and which records and gates that, and records can be destroyed. It would definitely be a cost savings in that it would minimize the amount of time, once the system is up and running, that staff has to manually search for records. Right now we do have a lot of records that are still in paper format that have not been scanned. So we do have staff that has to go through when they're trying to find information. And we also have records that seem to have a gap and might be missing. So this will definitely help us avoid that because everything can be tied together. So when one search could bring up all historic records. There is a one-time cost implementation of, can't see that apparently up there, 27,503 and 69 cents. But the annual, annual subscription for this would be 10,897.35 with a possibility of a 5% increase in software. We, it is a subscription service, so there is no contract for a number of years. It would just be an annual renewal, unless we decide to go with another product, which hopefully that won't happen.
Teresa, if I may, isn't Laserfish the
Yes, yeah.
Records management system that all the municipalities and government entities use?
Yeah, if, if a municipality doesn't have Laserfish, they either have something they built in-house, for example, Phoenix, or they're doing a manual Excel product, so. It does, this does hit a lot of our strategic plan or a couple of our strategic, strategic plan, fiscal sustainability and our innovative and high-performing organization. And I know I went through that really fast, so if you have any questions.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Questions?
Question, thank you. Why is the one-time cost for implementation significantly higher than the annual subscription fee?
So that has to do with all the programming that has to be done by MCCI to get the setup exactly how we want it. So pretty much that, I mean, that covers pretty much all of it. So they have to program everything. We, I work with them and the goal is to start this this summer to try to have most of the records or many of the records up by fall and then work on historic records afterwards. But going forward, we would start with all the records, once it's up and running going forward, and then go back and see what historic records we can get into the system. But it, to get the system up and running, to have it set exactly how we want it, is going to take some time. Okay. And then it's also the training component. They do offer training for all the staff.
Okay, and just for a follow-up, does, when you say the historical documents that need to be retained, does that mean taking all the current paper files and your scanning and everything is included in the same system?
That would be all in the same system, yes.
Thank you.
And again, that wouldn't necessarily be this summer or even this year.
Not this summer?
I have a couple of projects I'm working on, so I will do my best. Thank you.
Teresa, you have to do all the scanning yourself?
I will be working with staff, but the goal would be if perhaps in the future, we might have a grant to have, and we're actually working staff as we're looking at a grant to get funds for scanning for that project.
Seems to be a huge amount of work.
That's what I think, yeah.
Yeah, that's why it won't be immediate.
You ought to hire about a dozen high school kids for the summer.
Possibly.
Maybe, maybe not, not the, I don't know about that. You want to find them again. I did want to just make a comment. So Teresa is committed to everything we're doing from this point forward. You know, resolutions, ordinances, everything that's current that as it's occurring will be scanned and optically imaged and put into the database. And there will be a number of things that she also has that she'll be able to go ahead and get on. But it's the old paper files that's going to take a number of years probably to get up to speed. But I'm confident like, you know, we do contracts. Contracts will be the types of thing that will go onto this. We're pretty confident that maybe within the, you know, within three to five years, we'll have everything optically imaged, searchable with multiple tags that people can search. The next phase after we do it internally, we are going to open this up to the public. So we'll have a portal that the public can search for records. So the idea is that will, when, when Teresa talked about that this ultimately will reduce, you know, costs and time, well, that's because the staff won't have to research this. It will be self-service, so to speak, and people can find what they're looking for. And of course, they're going to probably on occasion ask staff to, they're, they're not finding something. And it might be a record doesn't exist. Or it might be the record is tagged with different, you know, keywords. But we're really excited. This is, I think, really moving us in the right direction. A lot of our peers in the valley have already been in doing this. And what's great about us getting into it late is we get to learn from all the mistakes that they made up to this point. So, and I mean by mistakes, I'm not saying it was a mistake for them to get into the system, but we can learn really best practices now that they've had it for a number of years. So I think it's a good timing for us to get into this now.
Other questions? I, I, I think you ought to speed it up. I think you ought to hire the resources to get it done. I, I don't think it can be done on a, with your regular job and stuff. It just doesn't sound like it's ever going to get done.
Well, this first year will definitely be the setup and making sure the naming conventions. And I have a, make sure I have a training manual that's detailed for, so that everyone is on the same page. So, and that is, speaking of best practice, from everyone that I've spoken to, that's the biggest thing is the naming conventions and the tagging of documents. So we're, I'm taking it slow to get it set up correctly and make sure it's, everything is in there right. And then perhaps this time next year, we can, I'll be coming forward with a proposal for the budget or something.
Well, I hope you go see Bill Dozel and see if they got some high school kids you can hire part-time and bring in.
Or college student interest.
Maybe some internships.
So are you going to have to manually tag the old documents? Or is there kind of a optical recognition, you know, that's going to?
So I think I have to work on training the program. So there is, yeah, there will be some, but there's going to be some training that to the, for the program itself.
I understand large language models, I get it.
But that will be the goal. And then as new things come in, it'll give me hopefully the suggestion.
It'll automatically tag the keywords and move it on, okay.
Counsel, anything else? Okay, so public comment?
I have no one wishing to speak.
Okay, so we're ready for, I'll make the motion here. I move that we authorize the town manager to execute a software subscription service agreement for records management software with MCCILLC.
Second.
Any other comments?
Straightforward.
Nope, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
And remember, which is council discussion, possible approval in establishing an ad hoc citizen task force on state trust open space.
Mayor and council, staff has done quite a bit of work up to this point to present to the council some strategies relating to the possible acquisition of the 4,000 acres of state trust land. And one of the, one of the strategic priorities in the strategic plan calls on the council and staff to evaluate the possibility of that. What is before you tonight is a request to establish a ad hoc citizens task force to evaluate the possibility of the town acquiring the 4,000 acres and present their findings and recommendations to council approximately February of 2026. As we have presented to the council in the past, the. the time to put this on the ballot for consideration by the voters would be in November of 2026. In order to stick to that timeline, there is a period in May when the county requires if we're going to add any ballot language, that the council has to act on a resolution by that time. So the February timeframe looks really good from my perspective because I believe we could start doing a lot of public information meetings and sessions, either just as this group is about ready to complete its, its task and to have a number of meetings for the public to be able to attend. What is before you is also a request that this not be a town manager established committee, where the town managers appoints the people to the committee, but this be a council-appointed committee. I would come back, we would do a recruitment during the summertime, and I would make it very simple for people. I would just go ahead and have people email me emails of interest. And I would have just a few key questions that I had asked that they respond to. One might be, you know, do you live in town? How long have you lived in town? How important is this to you, that type of thing to help us? And then in September, we'll provide you the listing of the people who have volunteered to be on this. We will promote the vacancies on the website, social media, and also have articles in our local newspapers. I would also recommend that it be about nine to 11 members, which is about, I think, the right size. I mentioned in my staff report that I was anticipating that this would be very similar to the Morning Star process. It's a little bit different in that Morning Star did have half the members were opposed and half were in favor, and there were some that were undecided. I'm not suggesting we do that. We just have people that are interested, go ahead and have them apply, and then we'll provide the names to the council, and then the council will make that appointment. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have or any areas I've not addressed in my comments.
I think, I think this is one that, that you might want to consider 11 to 15 members. We need to get as wide a representation as possible simply because we have different groups inside of Cave Creek. We have different neighborhoods in Cave Creek, and we want to get a broad spectrum of people. And there are going to be some people who are going to want, you know, the property assessment. There are going to be some people who want increase in sales tax or some people who want different things. If they're going to explore those things, it's better to have a larger group where they can, where they can discuss it amongst themselves and then come back with recommendations to us. But I think if you make this too small, there are going to be people who are upset that they don't get, get an opportunity to have a say in this. We had a number of people, I think, last time with the Trails Committee that didn't make it. I mean, we have about 15 people there. This is much more important, you know, as far as future of the town than that is. So I think a larger group would be better, personal opinion.
And I just want to make sure everyone understands, just so it's very clear. So what I'm recommending, and again, the council can change this, but to have the project scope of the task force be very narrow, narrowly defined as to study and evaluate the possibility of the town of Cave Creek referring the purchase of 4,000 acres to voters in November 2026. So just keeping it yes or no. And then there may be, to your point, there might be other alternatives, and that could certainly be in their, their report to the council. But keeping it narrowly focused, I think, helps with not having this take too long to do what needs to be done.
I agree with you, but I also believe what he said about other alternatives. There are some that I think should be examined and maybe brought to council at that time.
Yeah, I'm not saying that those other alternatives wouldn't be looked at. I'm just saying, we just got to be careful because we just don't have a lot of time to do what we need to do.
I'm good with it. I think it's a good plan.
One question, thank you. Is there an opportunity for local businesses to have input to the process? And how would you see that interacting with the Citizens Committee?
You know, I think it's, it's good for the businesses, maybe for some, you know, one or two representatives to be on the committee, I think, would be good. Because they are also, you know, taxpayers and they have a vested interest in this. So I think that's a really good point that you bring up because we tend to think of ourselves or people in the community as voters, and a lot of them do have a vested interest. I would probably ask, though, if they are a business owner, that they, they actually are residents too.
Yes. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, public comment?
Carol Perry. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you. My name's Carol Perry. I live in Cave Creek. I, first of all, want to take a minute to suggest that you at least think of the word volunteer. I've been working with nonprofits for 30 years here, and it's easy to get volunteers to do stuff like scan documents if they know what they're doing. Just a thought, I would help. So about open space, I won't take any credit for Spur Cross, but I worked my ass off for Spur Cross along with a lot of other people. And what we thought was going to be by the skin of our teeth, and we were up against a guy with barrels of ink who was against us, and we pulled it off hugely. So I am very confident that we can come up with a plan to save these 4,000 acres that will get the whole community invested, and I'll help any way I can. And thank you so much for finally getting this on the table and putting all that money on the table right up front. And I found out today that all of us who came to town, I think, 17 or 18 years ago with a $400 check, because we subscribed to the rumor that if we all wrote a $400 check, we could buy it that day. That $400 has added up to thousands, and it's somewhere in a trust fund for us. So there's that money too. I know we can do this, so thanks for thinking of it, and let's do it.
Thanks, Carol.
Bill Bessor?
My name is Bill Bessor. I'm a Cave Creek resident. And I thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. You guys keep showing up. It's an amazing thing. If we look at what we're about to do, this is a very big deal. And Cave Creek has a history of sometimes not making the very best deals. And in business, what we learn is that all of us together are smarter than any of us. And if we can create a committee, and we can be creative, and we can look at this, we can make this a really good deal. And if the committee blows it, then you can blame us, if I'm on the committee. So there are a number of possibilities that go really beyond just a straight-up yes or no. Please provide that committee with, if you decide to create one, with some latitude to bring you ideas. Remember, the committee will serve at your convenience. They are your tool. You know, I understand we have more horses than people in Cave Creek. The towns that surround us have more lawyers than we have horses. We need everybody we can get to participate in this. And so I think, you know, a good-sized committee is a good idea. And we need input from the businesses, of course, as well. And I really hope that you will embrace this and give us this opportunity to serve the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
I have no additional speakers.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, just one more point. So Mr. Bessor reminded me of something, and that is, so the other advantage of what I'm proposing tonight versus a town manager creates a committee kind of a thing is that this is all going to be transparent. It's all going to be with posted meeting notices and agendas. The public is welcome to attend these task force meetings. So I just want to make sure that that's out there as well. And they'll always have probably a, I would anticipate a call to the public as well. So people, the residents who are watching the meetings can also participate.
Great. I've got a request to make the motion. Tom, go ahead.
This is a motion to approve establishing an ad hoc committee task force on state trust open space.
Cynthia the second, so Tom?
This is the defining thing for Cave Creek, working with the land trust, state, many other people. There are some ways in which this community is unique. There's some things that bring us together, and this is one of both. And it's not so much a matter of preserving these 4,000 acres. It's a matter of defining ourselves. Our best way to move forward and maintain the initiative that we have is to draw people into Cave Creek who have our values. And I think that's a very important part of this proposal.
Cynthia?
I really trust in this process going forward. And I think, given an opportunity to the voters and the residents, that the better angels of our nature will prevail and that we can move forward with this kind of preservation. It's our opportunity to pay forward what we've enjoyed for free for the last 40 years as a town and even longer as residents. And that's the open space that surrounds us. So I agree with Tom that it defines us and is a great opportunity to save that for our future. I do hope that the process will be sensitive to our residents who have economic challenges, maybe fixed incomes, maybe concerns about their ability to stay in the town long-term and what impact additional costs may be to them. Those are all things to be explored by a citizens' task force. And I think we can find a balance of participants who will help us define those issues going forward.
Other comments?
I think it's important to recognize the people who created the intergovernmental agreement back in 2008 because that's where this process began. And we didn't have to worry about it until these days, when the deadline is approaching in 2028 for that IGA to expire. So those people, including the mayor at the time, Vince Francia, and a variety of you who are in this audience tonight, were involved in establishing that IGA. And that's, that was the beginning of taking ownership of this land. And I'm glad and I'm proud to be on this council who are carrying it forward.
So when I ran originally for council, that was probably my number one thing other than water, was acquiring this trust land. I've met with a lot of people in this room and talked to them about it. I'm very passionate about it. I'm right there with Carol Perry, who's got her head on her phone or something. But Carol, you're absolutely correct, we will do this. This is not something that's a maybe. We're going to pull this off. That's all I have to say.
So one thing that I would like, like, like the folks to consider is if we acquire the land, or when we acquire the land, we're going to have to manage that land too. So as part of the committee, maybe they could form a group to say, okay, will we make it part of Spur Cross? Will we make it part of the Maricopa County? I think also one of the things we need to do as a town, perhaps, is talk to Maricopa County and see if they're willing to go in, just like they, they did with Spur Cross. Just a thought.
Tom, do you want to?
No, you're here.
Okay. This has been a long time coming. It's, the 2008 started, so yeah, this is, this really is a good deal. The task force approach was so successful, Morning Star, I think this is going to be a lot less controversial, and it's going to be a good lead-in because we're going to have to get votes, most likely. But I like the ideas that, that we've had to raise money, to find other, to find partners, to find donations that Joe has had. I think those things are good. And also, you know, we're going to have to do something with this. We got to think about, you know, are we going to build basketball courts? That's a joke. But, but we, we're going to have, we're going to need trails. We're going to need something else in there. I mean, it, some way, and it's adjacent to a lot of county properties. So the county is a natural partner in this. They've got some land next to the rodeo grounds that would, would be very nice for another entrance. So maybe we can, we can put, put this together into a really cool deal. And I'm 100% in favor of it. So if we, we got public comment, so I guess we're ready for a vote. So all those in favor?
I oppose.
Seven zero, okay, that's what I expected. Next on the agenda, and last, is the presentation of the Utilities Quarterly Report. And please, nobody leave the room.
Yeah, you can all, there you go now.
Our Utilities Director, Deputy Utilities Director tagged in this. Unfortunately, the Utilities Director had an unexpected dental appointment today that he had to take, and he could not be here in person, but he is able to do this through the virtual meeting. So I'll turn this over to Mr. Cruz-Weisner, who will kick it off. And if we can get the presentation up.
Yeah, again, I apologize if I can't be there, Mayor and Council, in person. Yeah, it was a cracked tooth. So yeah, we'll work with Nick and get you through this update, this quarterly update. It seems like it's odd that we're doing this first quarter, third quarter of fiscal year 2425, and we're towards the end of this fourth quarter. But we're trying to get closer to the ends, but we're trying to give you some good, good data and measures about what's going on in your utility systems. Next slide. So we've, in last meeting, we sort of discussed, our last update, we provided the summary of the performance measures that were listed in the town's Performance Management Guide. The six that are there, the cost of water production, cost of wastewater production, and then number five and six, insurance compliance and monitoring and septic system failures. We said that in the last presentation that those better fit on more of an annual basis. So our thought was, we weren't going to talk about them tonight. We don't have data prepared, but with council's approval, we'll continue that thought process. We're really looking, looking at average water customer consumption per account and looking at identifying water losses in the system to help the systems run more efficiently overall. That's really what we'll talk about tonight. But as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, we can give you the other data sets. Next slide. So kicking off the residential versus non-residential average water consumption, this is a big one for us to take a look at, make sure it's properly, to see if there's any trends going on. It's going from calendar year 2022 on the right side to 24 on the left side, the blue column. We do that in the calendar year just because that's actually how we report this largely to Maricopa County, or, I'm sorry, to Arizona Department of Water Resources. What we did notice last year, you'll notice in Cave Creek, the residential, the average annual consumption per account increased slightly over past, past years. We attribute that to a couple of things. Way we started, we've been changing out meters since about 23. And in this past spring, we really did the large meter change out in Cave Creek. So I think we're getting better metering in the system. And last year was a long, hot summer, so people did use their water more consistently. In Desert Hills, their consumption on the residential side has stayed fairly flat. We had a little bump up in the non-residential. Non-residential for us is anything, could include schools, businesses, et cetera. And give a, add it to the table, I should add it in, I apologize for that, is the non-residential customers. We have about a 60/40 split of customers between Cave Creek and Desert Hills. But for residential customers, we have just under 2,300 residential customers in Cave Creek and about just under 1,800 in Desert Hills. But on the non-residential, which most likely, most of it is commercial, in Cave Creek, there's 223 accounts classified as non-residential, while in Desert Hills, there's only 20. So you'll see that there's a big jump in the non-residential in Desert Hills. That's partly buffered by the fact that, or exacerbated by the fact that we have an elementary school out in Desert Hills with large turf areas, and we have a couple of businesses out there that are using a lot of water. As we move forward into the town's water conservation efforts, those are the, the users we really want to focus on. Because paying for the dollar, is it, you know, obviously, if we get everybody to start conserving, that's great. If we can get the large water users to conserve, I think that's where we're going to get some good benefit out of a conservation program. Next slide. Next thing that we track is our revenue versus non-revenue water. This is the amount of water we produce, it goes in the system and where we can't account for, where it's going to. Our goal is actually, or mandated by the state's Fifth Management Plan, active area Fifth Management Plan is to be under 10%. We've been working towards having Cave Creek tighten that up. Part of that, we do believe this upcoming year that will get tighter as we actually install the new meters. So we are already seeing some benefits of that meter program. Nick can talk in details if any council has any questions about what we're finding in details. But we still have the water losses attributed to our deliveries to, to Rancho Minano. So that shows up in this trend. This is actually, the way we calculate this, again, goes back to how we have to report this to Arizona Department of Water Resources. And there are some restrictions that we've tried to argue in the town's favor, but we haven't been successful to try and do that. But overall, I think we're, we're doing fairly well. We do the twenty twenty two rate study, starting in twenty three, we started transferring five percent of the treatment transmission loss. Of Cave Creek water to Desert Hills. That was where the, we had a big step decrease in this lost revenue versus non-revenue number. Next slide.
Just add to that too, what we've been finding in, as we've been doing the installs and. And going into Cassell is there's been a number of obviously failed meters that have been underreporting severely underreporting. But also we've been catching some billing errors where there's been, a multiplier has been wrong. So as you know, well know that there's multiple meters, different meters throughout the system. And they each have different multipliers based on, you know, historically what they needed to be a multiplier of. So we've actually gone through and found some that the multiplier should have been ten or a hundred, but it was set at one. So some customers, they have been built for, say, a hundred and fifty gallons when it should have been either fifteen hundred or even fifteen thousand. So we found quite a number of accounts that we strongly believe that's going to drop this percentage quite a bit. So it has been a very good exercise going through this meter change out, clean slate, really.
Yeah, it's great. And Nick's taken the, the lead on that project. It's very happy when we're done. We actually have a slide at the end, just giving you a quick summary of where the project was, again, looking backwards to the last quarter. Next slide, Nick. So we always are cautious of losses in the system.
Sean, can you hear me?
Yes.
I had a question for Nick. So Nick, get to tell those customers that we undercharge them by ten, ten times.
I do. But it's, it is pretty clear, easy reasoning too, that, you know, just to show, obviously, a household of three or four, even two. Use more than, say, a hundred and fifty gallons of water for an entire month. So generally, it's an easy conversation, but. The conversations when they get their bills is a little different story, but I've had quite a few interesting conversations.
That'd be caught though, because that is so low, an order of magnitude lower. My question is why wasn't that caught ten years ago? But don't, you'll answer it.
Okay.
He wasn't here.
I gotta get an answer for you.
Answer Mary's question, and part of that goes back to just the number of different meter bodies we have in the system and, and in Cave Creek. And we were trying to use the Itron system to read those meters. The, the real issue that we saw was just the configuration between the existing meter bodies when we added it. Or the existing Itron, I would call it endpoint, had failed. You had the new endpoint onto it and there was a different multiplier built into how, a different configuration into the newer models of Itron endpoints. So I think it's just, some of it goes back ways. I don't think some of it's that old, but it was a good. Now we're going to be all Neptune system on both sides, which is great. Huge improvement for us. So jumping over again to water losses by each system, so the next two slides after this will be about Desert Hills. So you'll see at the bottom of this is the one I'm most proud of staff is the, the orange at the bottom of this chart, which is water leaks. The staff have been really, really active and proactive, some of the tools that council has given us in the past couple of years. Things like the vacuum trailer has helped us immensely on being able to be more proactive about getting onto leaks. So we don't see the massive leaks that we were seeing even a few years ago where it was hard for staff to get to them. We still have to do a lot of flushing in Cave Creek water, just because of the inherent nature of, we have some areas where we have larger lines. Like the twelve inch line that goes up school across Schoolhouse Road, across Fleming Springs. And then up Spur Cross, it's a very large transmission main. Where only an eight inch line would be warranted, but the twelve inch was because they thought future development was going to happen up there. So we have areas like that, that we have to do flushing in order just to keep the water in compliance with drinking water standards. We have water age issues, chlorine issues that we flush for, so the staff are very proactive on doing that. We're trying to balance that flushing out, so we don't do it quite as much just around when we do our sampling. We, that's, so we're, we're getting more balanced about that. You can see the, the red bars there are more balanced, but it's still a loss. In total, our losses, there's about two, two point four percent in Cave Creek for the flushing that we have to do on the system. We are looking for other things that we can do, some more proactive directional flushing of the system. So maybe the, the lines will stay, the chlorine residual and other things will stay up longer. But we're working towards that goal, but I'm most proud of just the water leaks. Again, staff do a really bang up job of getting onto leaks. Earlier aggressively and be able to get them repaired to a point that we don't have those leaks. Oh, sorry.
Question for you, Sean. Going back one slide to the, to the meters. Did we receive our entire grant for the smart meters?
We are getting close. I was going to mention that in the slide at the end about the meter. So Mayor Council, Vice Mayor, the town has a, had a two million dollar. Oh no, actually, no, I mixed up my projects. I apologize for that. Yes, we actually do have the grant for the meters. We've been billing that down and our last billing will happen this month. So we have about half a million dollars for the meter change out. I got confused with the, the new grant that we're getting for the interconnect site.
Right.
That one, we're getting close to getting that two million dollars of funding.
Did I get an answer?
Well, we'll have it expended here soon. So yeah, we're, we're going to use that full amount of the grant, the half a million dollars.
Okay, so we're going to get the money or we already have?
We already have about three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand of it so far, so we're another hundred and fifty to go.
Wonderful. Thanks.
We're, we're under the gun to get it expended fully before the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah.
With this contract that we have, it's doing the installation of, of the meters.
You have two weeks?
We have a big invoice going to them soon. We'll get it.
Contractors do a lot of work for us and Nick's been keeping them rolling, so they, they, they know, we're down to the last few hundred meters and we're gonna, we have a. Meter purchase to submit and then as well as the contractors work for the month, that'll, that'll bill out the project.
On your next slide, where it shows the hydrant flushing. Same location every time or the same locations? Have we thought about putting French drains in there and at least trying to recoup some of that water into the water table?
We were actually talking with staff about moving the locations around a little bit more and actually adding different locations. We typically try to get towards washes. In some cases, we're not getting to it, so it will actually recharge. So it's not just, it is having to percolate through the ground. But that is something I know you, for you, a customer you brought up before, but we're actually in our pressure zone eight, have been working with staff. To try and make sure that we got all the mapping, all the lines properly identified, and we're looking to add some new fire hydrants to allow us to better distribute the flushing. We have, I hate to use the term, but annoyed a couple of residents because we're flushing consistently in the same areas. And yeah, but yeah, we'll see how we can better utilize this water. Right now, most of it, we flush towards washes, which then ends up percolating and we're getting put back into the aquifer that way, not as directly as a French drain though. You're right.
Vaporate quickly. If you have the French drains or something like that, it tends to drain into the ground rather than lose as much to. To vapor loss.
Yeah, I mean, either French drains or we could look to do, I'll try to remember the term first. In stormwater, you do the, it's the dry wells effectively. So if, if that's another option we could do too, which will get that water back into the groundwater table quicker without the losses.
An acre feet is a lot of, a lot of stuff we could put back in the ground and perhaps, you know, pump it out, you know, using our wells. Just a thought.
Yeah. Sean, one more question. You've shown five point nine eight percent revenue versus non-revenue in Desert Hills. And we're, we're in our rate study, last I heard, we're using five percent. And in addition to the five point nine eight, you've got the, the treating losses. So is, is there a plan to recalculate that five percent? That we're charging, water loss for Desert Hills, a little north of that number, based on this and the treating losses?
Yes, Sherry's kicked off the, the rate study and we've brought that forward to Kevin at Willdan, who's leading up the, the charge. We added that five percent loss. It's a treatment and transmission loss. It's actually equal to what Phoenix charges as a treatment transmission loss for the water that they're going to divert, treat and deliver to us through the interconnect site. So we thought that was a good starting point. Yeah, this gives us an opportunity to take a look at that, to see if that can go better. The real issue was happening is in Cave, Desert Hills has, has had the Neptune metering system. They started in twenty twelve and then they completed about twenty nineteen. So we've had good metering out there and we've just recently replaced the meters on the wells. And also the interconnects, we have really good understanding of what comes in the system, what goes out. So that's, this gives us an opportunity to take a look at that, to see if it should be a little higher. If we get it up to six percent, that would be more matching what we're actually seeing in the system. So you're, you're correct, that's something we can do with the rate study. Because it wouldn't be something, because what we did was we matched what the I G A is with Phoenix. So this could be a Cave Creek specific transfer of losses between the systems. Okay, again, we're jumped in a little bit and again, Desert Hills, because we have the better metering out there. We've been able to better keep the revenue versus non-revenue lines closer. Next slide. And these volumes are much less than you see in the Desert Hills or the Cave Creek side of the system. We do not have, although the, the leaks look higher. In fact, in the overall scale, they're not that much difference. Because we have to do a lot less flushing out in Desert Hills because of the well water, you know, most of the water in Desert Hills is from Cave Creek. But ironically, it gets consumed and we don't have the, most of the lines out in Desert Hills are six inches and smaller, but we have a lot of eight inch and larger. In Cave Creek, it adds to the volume of water in the system. So it gets consumed quicker. And there's less water aging issues. We've been seeing a few areas where we have to go out and be a little more proactive with our flushing out in Desert Hills. We're getting nervous to some of our maximum contaminant levels in some areas. So we actually usually try to stay below eighty percent of any M C Ls, maximum contaminant levels. So as we, we see those happening, we get more aggressive with our flushing. But again, staff are really proactive on getting on either main line breaks or service line breaks, which keeps those numbers down. In Desert Hills, the, it was actually only point two for the last, for this period of water losses. Where it was a little higher in Cave Creek, but the Cave Creek was already doing the flushing that we have to do in the system. Next slide. Does want to give council an update on the, the Phoenix interconnect site? And I'll admit, some of these photos aren't exactly from the end of last quarter. So but the end of the quarter, you'll see the, the tank was done, the reservoir tank was done and the painting was done. So that has now been water tested. What you don't see on the site is we're using the water in that tank. Actually, the contractor has a pump and pumps it out and uses it for dust mitigation on the site. So we're, I don't think we're going to have to use any additional water than what's in that tank. It's not dropping very quickly. The, the wash in the north side, although it's, it's, the site's fenced in, some people might need to see that, there's fairly large wash that crosses the site. Goes across the north side, it goes from east to west. So that's actually, the work on that is, is almost done. They're doing a large rip wrap on that. On the booster pumps, I always like to say in the utilities, we bury our best work. So the pump cans and all the valves have been built. It took a long time to get to that point. But now we have a slab and as of a couple of days ago, we have both the headers, both the discharge four and the zone one headers in place. And everything's getting buttoned up on top. So we're still on schedule for summer of twenty twenty six. The, most of the major work should be done by March. It's just the final piece of electrical gear, our, what's called the service entrance is delayed. We have issued or have the permit in place from APS. They will set a new transformer and do some work, so we're waiting for a schedule from them, but it doesn't sound like that's the delay. It's the, the one piece of gear that powers everything is what's delaying us right now. But I keep pressing on the contractor to keep notifying him and asking if we can get that accelerated at all. But as I talked to my peers around the valley, it seems like electrical gear is still one of the long lead items on every project. Even though we did an early G M P to try and get ahead of that, this one gear got behind, so. So with that, next slide, Nick. Here's some other capital projects we are working on. So the one thing we had in the capital program and we have for the next few years is working on the cap booster pump stations and the pipeline itself. This year, we really focused on the, the four booster pump stations. And really doing two, two projects. One was actually replacing the motor drives in all of them. Those are the electrical devices that actually power the motors. I can now say that we actually have new drives in place in all three, four sites that are equivalent. So we actually had, we've actually found that the, the largest pumps that we have, largest motors that we have are at the cap one booster pump station. But that same motor drive works at all of the sites. So now we've got a uniform motor drive unit all the way up for, it helps for spare parts, it helps for configuration. So in the future, we can make sure we have, and I think we have three spares right now, so we have any one station goes down, we can replace them all eagerly and very quickly. The other thing that got completed this last quarter was actually the pump isolation valves. One of the struggles we've had, we found inadvertently, sadly, because of an emergency that was that the individual booster pumps. While we could isolate the booster pump stations, there was an inlet and outlet valve that can isolate each site. We couldn't manually isolate each of the three individual pumps. So that has now been corrected. So now we can in an emergency isolate one pump, continue to move water up the pipeline using two of the pumps. Still make water as, as we work on repairs. That's what caused the outage two years ago when we actually had an outage at cap four, the motor went down and we pulled the pump motor to try and repair that. But we had to have the station down for several hours at a time, so we weren't able to produce any water. We have a, a project to update the thirty eighth street booster pump station that is nearing completion. We have twenty five to thirty customers, I think right now, off of that single booster station that actually got installed. Right after the town bought the system in two thousand seven, so it's in need for an upgrade for just both meet domestic demands. And per the master plan, we're looking to try and increase its capacity so that it'll have a fire pump, the fire pump being five hundred gallons a minute at that site. So we're getting close to having that done. We're also working with the pressure zone nine, that's our Rockaway booster upgrade. That's being done in conjunction with the developer. So the developer already has put his money in earnest, waiting for us to complete the design. Our thought was that they're too small a booster pump station, so we're going to try and bid them as one package. Obviously, we keep track of it for funding separation, but we think we might get better benefit and, and more interest in the project having it as two booster pump stations. We were looking to bid the third avenue enjoy ranch reservoir repair project. We were trying to repair, start repairing the reservoirs out in Desert Hills. That's actually one project when Sherry mentioned that we pushed one out. We, we, after discussing and trying to balance on the C I P, that's one we've pushed out one more year. We're actually in the capital program, there's also an arsenic mitigation well, had arsenic mitigation project at that site. So we're gonna pause the design. It's fairly, it's ready to bid at this point. And pick it up again next spring and then get it out on the street with the arsenic mitigation project and, and do that one. That allowed us to push some costs in, in the capital side in Desert Hills. I didn't put it on the slide, but we do have several wastewater projects we're working on. One is the indoor sewer crossing just up from Cave, up from Town Hall on the east side of Cave Creek Road. The indoor hills wash, we have a ten inch sewer line we're getting repaired. So that's middle has been made to Maricopa County, so once that's out, we'll look to get that bid. We've been working and you, people may have noticed in this, in the first quarter, we were doing work in Cave Creek Road on doing manhole repairs. We started at the east end of Town Core. What we're finding is that the bases had deteriorated to the point that it was hard even to jet, let alone camera the lines. So the contractor, while they were cleaning the entire manholes, we really just focused on repairing the bench and the channel and getting those restored back. We'll probably have to go back in in a year or two to do the rest of the manholes, but the, the worst of the deterioration was in the base and the channels and that, that work is ongoing. So that contractor's been doing a really good job for us. We also have another project to do some repair work on our Chipperosa list station. It was in this year's capital program, we've asked for it to be carried forward. We're getting close to having the full design done and we'll start working on that probably in a couple of months to wrap that one up. That's the town's oldest list station. It provides the sewer flow for the Ranch Minano subdivision, the seventy four lots out there. So we're going to be redoing some interior piping, adding a pump bypass, so it'll match the other sites which have pump bypasses. As well as recoating the, the wet well itself. So, next slide. There's several development projects that we've been focused on and working with. Focus on the family, wherever he seems to notice the buildings, there's actually some water and sewer improvements that were already done with that. Largely the sewer line on Schoolhouse Road. They completed a link in the, and replaced the section of dead end four inch line. That was in Schoolhouse Road back to Military, south to Military Road, so that was a great project. Our staff then continued it, the extra forty feet, so we're on the south side of Military. So as Public Works comes in to pave that intersection, we also had the manhole in the intersection repaired. We should be good for a number of years, not have to go back to that, that section and do any work. Uh, we should be good for a number of years, not have to go back to that, that, uh, section and do any work in there. So. Again, we had a, uh, it was a cob together, a piece of pipe as everybody found it. There was a, that's A C S asbestos cement. Six inch line that then transitioned to a four inch galvanized line that was just very tuberculated. So, um. You know, it was, it was, it was a bad piece of pipe that needed to get out of the system. Now we actually have a loop piece of infrastructure in Schoolhouse Road. Between, uh, Military and, um, uh, Cave Creek Road. Nice improvement. We are continuing to work with Cohaba Springs on their development agreement. Uh, council asked, uh, authorized the extension, uh, through. I think the end of September, or I believe. So we're looking at the booster station designs. I've got some final comments back to them and they're, what's called the basis of design report. Well, then that'll be included into the report as long as some other stuff and we'll be coming back and when council comes back in the fall. With that new, uh, development agreement with Cohaba Springs. And in general, you know, staff have been spending a lot of time and by staff, I mean Nick, he's been doing the only his work on this and I, I so much appreciate him doing this. Uh, sorting out utility conflicts and locations. He's doing that a lot with the staff as people come into the system, you know, we have a, I. Been working ever since I got here on the mapping system and it's, it's never fully done. Um, but it's getting better and better, but it seems like every time there's a development, they always seem to come into the one area where we have questions on the mapping. So we have to spend time, Nick, with the field staff to figure stuff out. And we're also spending a lot, a lot more time on permit reviews and inspections. Uh, that's given us the benefit because we're, we're, um. Be more actively involved in that. We're finding issues and being able to resolve them early rather than waiting till something happens at the end, which. When we didn't have staff resources when I first started, that's we were doing, dealing a lot with that. So. Give a lot of credit to Nick for that.
Or, or Nick, perhaps you could answer it. Uh, the focus on the family, new development. Do you think, I don't know how many beds will be in that facility or how many will be occupied at any given time? But do you think that it will contribute significantly or not to our wastewater treatment facility?
I don't, you know, they're, they took over, uh, the, uh, in fact, the water meter, the two inch water meter that was feeding the hotel prior, I think the, um. Prior hotel, I can't remember how many rooms they had. I think it actually had more rooms than focus on the family does. So I don't think their wastewater, um. Generation will be that much different. They just configured their, uh, their connection to the wastewater lines differently and added some new manholes for us.
Hotel, that doesn't mean that they were occupied.
Yeah, they, as far, they'll probably get more consistent flows. I'm assuming if focus on family is more consistent operation. Then we were gonna go to the hotel. But, um, overall, I think the, the hotel, if it had been occupied, probably would have given us maybe a little bit more wastewater flow than that facility will.
I'm hoping it could benefit us in some way. Related to supply. Bed tax, right? Tax for that?
They did help six inch loop that, that was a project that probably would have caught.
That's a very good improvement for us when we figure that. Uh, the project I didn't add to the slide and I should have was, um, and council may be hearing about it when you, uh, reconvene after the summer break is Desert Hills Ranch. That is one of the projects in desert hills that has a, a water certificate. So they have approached us again. About, uh, looking at system improvements. They do have, in addition to the certificate, a water certificate, they actually do have a, um. Uh, uh, utility infrastructure agreement that's in place for the property. I've been working with Michelle Van Klaassen on that. It's a fifty-one lot subdivision. So it's, uh, from a water resource standpoint, we did account for that. There's another subdivision out in desert hills that has a certificate. Um, but you, uh, council may see that come back in the fall. We're working with the developer on that. They actually have a, a builder who wants to buy the property. So we want to make sure that they do not harm the system and see what improvements can be made realistically. Next reason, next slide, Nick. So water resources is a huge thing that we've been working a lot on. Um, obviously, uh, that's. We found that out with the master plan work. Uh, we actually knew about it before the master plan, but the master plan really helped solidify. Um, we don't know what the post twenty twenty-six cuts to the Colorado River supplies will be. Um, there's been a lot of discussions in the news, uh, I can, I can, um, back and forth. Um, we did plan on a twenty-five percent cut and that's what we're looking at when you, in the capital program. We were looking to buy new water resources and do water banking and withdrawals that would help build up to a twenty-five percent cut in that. But, uh, we are actively working on that. We've come up with, uh, short, mid and long-term strategies. Uh, the simplest short one is we actually did, uh, work with the city of Phoenix, uh, per our I G A with Phoenix. We can recharge with Phoenix and they can recover that water. Where in the past, when we have generated about two thousand acre feet of storage credits, uh, by recharging with essentialers on our project. Most of that water is in the hieroglyphics recharge facility, which we have no way of actively, uh, recovering that water. I'm not going to say those credits aren't worth something, but right now it's going to be difficult for us to physically access that water. So we can make sure we have wet water for the pipes. So. We've actually worked forward and it was actually in part of this year's budget to recharge with Phoenix. Uh, put the excess water we have this year and next year, uh, into the, uh, wells that Phoenix has set up the town and they can recover it on our behalf. Uh, the first year or two of the shortage. Uh, we're looking at some water exchange options, uh, that might give us access to, uh, the other. A big tranche of water that's actually been put into the ground on behalf of the state is, uh, you know, C A P's been recharging for a number of years. Is the Arizona Water Banking Authority. Um, but both C A P and Arizona Water Banking Authority, while they've been storing water. They've realized that withdrawing that water is difficult and costly and they're basically leaving it up to each of the different, um. Members have access to that water to get it out. So we're looking at some water exchanges to get us access to some of the Arizona Water Banking Authority. Water that's in our name and the town's name. We are looking to still see if there's any cap water available. Uh, we are still part of the Bartlet Dam project. Um, good news, we had a meeting last week and I'll probably send out a note that, um, a town manager can send out to everyone. The, uh, NIPA process has started on the process, uh, project. They are looking to have it complete and going to congrat- the Congress. By January of twenty twenty-eight, uh, to hopefully get the funding put in place. They still don't know, uh, and they're asking the participants and you'll see it in our capital program to actually have our portion of funding, which is about nine million dollars right now. Showing up in our capital program, but we're not sure. And one thing we've been sort of, I put your hand up to say, you know, is there a way that if the federal government's involved, could they do like they did with essentialers on our project and front all the monies? And then charge you back through our capital costs of running the system, but, um, we're not sure. There should still some challenges with Bartlet Dam. Cause, uh, we found out that there's an agency downstream that, uh, says they have prior rights. That might take up to nine percent of the water, uh, that we are looking for, but we're working through all that, all the adjudication of the water, uh, rights on that. And we're also working on, um, um, uh, new groundwater, uh, looking at for new groundwater rights, which goes into our wells. So we actually have done some work. But we, collectively, it's really been, again, uh, Nick doing the Yowens work on this is, uh, we've, uh, tested, uh, we're. Tested the Linda well, and this is sort of jumping ahead in time because this is more than a quarter ago, but we have just tested the, uh. The Linda well, sometimes referred to as the P U E well on Linda Drive, south of Cave Creek Road. That tested out two weeks ago. We've got water quality data coming in on that. Uh, we've tested the year prior, the right well, and in the next couple of weeks, we'll have the triangle well, which is on Grapevine Road and Schoolhouse, uh, tested also. Um, the wells are showing good promise. The right well seems to have the best capacity, about two hundred gallons, uh, per minute. The payway well, while it pumped about a hundred gallons per minute, the groundwater table was still subsiding. So we might have to install a smaller pump. So we have to, uh, uh, figure that out. And then once we get the numbers from the triangle well, they all. We're, we're thinking they're going to have good water quality. Unlike the old Vermish well, which was the last well operation running the Cave Creek, um, a rant. Um, uh, but, uh, uh, the Vermish well had very high arsenic levels. So these other ones are not nearly to the, uh. They're not over the M C L right now. So if you go over, maybe we can do a blending program with the water treatment plants. It gives us, gives us more options. Another tool in our tool chest for water resources.
John, a question. What, what kind of timeline are you considering reasonable for groundwater to be available to the town from the wells?
We only think, and we actually were able to put together some historic records back to the, uh, late eighties on the water production. Um, I, I honestly don't know if we start producing these wells, even a couple hundred gallons a minute. We'll have to monitor the groundwater table. For our projections, we're looking at about five years. If we get more than that, that's great, but we wanted to be conservative. And one of the things we have coming this next year is, is to start doing, uh, um, another hydrologic survey to take a look at that. You know, we are at the sort of the eastern edge of the aquifer, the Cave Creek here for the aquifer, um, where it's more shallow. Um, so yeah, well, for planning purposes, we've built in, uh, assuming that there'll be a drop in production about, in about five years.
Sean, I think the council member was asking like when they might be coming online.
Right, how, how?
Oh, I'll just say, um, yeah, we actually have the money in this new capital program, uh, one point four million dollars to actually do the whipping. So the right well will go probably first because it's probably been the best production. Um, and it's actually got an electrical circuit right there powered by the water treatment plant. So, yeah, that one, um, Clear Creek associates who's helping is with the designs. We'll put together a specification on the, the, uh, the motors and we'll start working on getting that bid. So we're hopeful that we can get all three equipped this year. The payway well still has some electrical circuits out there that we might be able to reuse and then, uh, the, um, triangle well where it'll be all full redo. Cause all, everything's been, uh, cleared off the site. So we'll have to add a new APS circuit out there, but. We're hopeful we can get all three done in the next twelve months and operational back into the system.
Thank you.
And then a big thing in water resources is water conservation. Um, if we can have our existing customers use less water. That's going to help extend the town's water resources. So we've had some really, really good discussions with the, uh, the utility advisory committee. Um, they've developed some great ideas and they've actually come up with a new outreach program and we wanted to get that to council here shortly, uh, if you guys, uh, come back. You can come with a new mascot. Um, uh, and I'm going to actually leave that so you guys can see it, uh, from them because they actually came up with it. And I'll give them a lot of great kudos to credit for that. So they're really wanting to get a, a really aggressive, um, program and came up with something that's Cave Creek specific, which I think will be great for us. Um, but yeah, we're trying to look at that. This year we actually are having the, um, capital program, uh, effort to also bring in, uh, probably outside consultant to help us. Uh, better define what conservation is and where we should be placing our efforts. So we'll do a. A, it, a conservation plan, uh, with some outreach funding. So we have two hundred thousand dollars identified this year, a hundred thousand of that to really, um. Define it, finishing the planning exercise off, work with the utility advisory board. And then a hundred thousand dollars, uh, starting this year and ongoing to implement that. And, you know, we may have to accelerate that further, but, um, with the information we're getting now and even out of the metering system, now I'll talk about that my last slide. Is we, you know, uh, we're, we're starting to roll up right now of the new my C three sixty, which allows people to see the Neptune metering data. So we have, uh, close to twenty-five hundred meters that we're seeing, uh, hourly data from, and we're trying to get that information into the hands of the consumers. So, uh, next slide, Nick, cause I, that leads right into the next slide.
So quick.
You didn't mention Harlaheka, um, however it's pronounced.
Harkahela.
Harkahela. It, what's the status on that currently?
Um, it's one of the ones we're tracking. Um, Harkahela is, uh, we still have the, well, I can't explain too much, but I understand that. Um, the two big and the first phase of that work, um, um. I'm trying to remember, it's, uh, Buckeye and Queen Creek are trying to move forward with that and they, they believe that they're going to get their permits here in short order. Uh, what's missing is the component of, of how to, to withdraw and treat and deliver that water to the C A P canal. Uh, and then also the wheeling agreements that are necessary. So that's all being discussed. There was a discussion with C A P. Which was an open session about if they're, they're seeing this Harkahela be one project and other projects where people are trying to use the, the C A P canal. As a transportation mechanism to, to move water from, uh, around the valley or in, from outside the valley. And they're, they're looking at, you know, constrictions in the, in, in the, um, C A P canal. The one thing I heard from all that discussion is the town has, uh, non-Indian ag agriculture rights. And then we also will be losing twenty-five percent of our M and I water. So with the way I heard it is C A P will account for that water. So that allows us some capacity without having to pay for an increase in the, the canal's, uh, transportation. But, you know, Harkahela is moving along. We're, uh, hopefully being able to bring something back to council in the fall with a discussion on that. But that's again, one of the larger, uh, long-term projects we're looking at.
Thank you, Sean.
Yeah. So I just want to end tonight on a really high note, which is the Cave Creek meter upgrade project. We've talked about some of the components. Again, next, uh, there was a, a good. Cleanup of the audits. I think in total, when I did some research a few years ago and talking to old staff, there were seven different meter bodies that we actually had in the system. All tried to, to read through Nitron reading system and that's where we found some of the errors because it's really hard. You know, it's easy to make errors on, you know, the number of dials, uh, the number of decimal places that you're reading. If you're reading in a, in a one gallon increment, point one gallon or smaller increments. That's, that's where the, the, the errors happen in the setup. Uh, but we are scheduled to be done. I'll actually with, uh, give credit to Nick and the team he's got together, um, by the end of this month. Uh, and we are starting the work and exercise, uh, uh, on the my three sixty setup. So we've got most of the data set together and the information together, sorry. And we're working with Bo to package that up and get, uh, it out to customers. What customers are able to do is log into the system and then, um, while not, everybody will be on the full, uh, A M I. Automatic metering infrastructure system right now. And I highlighted on the system received there, uh, when I did this chart a few weeks ago. We had about, uh, just under twenty-four hundred. I think we're just approaching twenty-five hundred as of, uh, when I looked at this morning. Uh, customers that were receiving hourly data from, um, but now everybody who has an empty meter is in the system. So even if you only see monthly data, you can start setting your own parameters. So at least as soon as we do our drive-by reads in cave, in desert hills. That, that is loaded into the system. So if someone sees an anomaly in their bills, they'll see it right away. They can set those alerts. And as we can get more refined the data for them, the hourly data, then they can, uh, set those, um, uh. Alarms. We are still hopeful that with the rollout of the new work that, uh, Sherry's doing with the, um, Wells Fargo. On the building side, uh, that we might be able to get, uh, right now, we're really focused on the mine three sixty on, on usage, but we're hopeful we can also get our billing data. But initially it will really just be focused or will only be focused on billing data. Uh, we are continuing some other discussions with, um, uh, the next thing we want to do is to upgrade, uh, desert hills. Uh, desert hills has the Neptune meters, but they're different vintages. And what I mean by that is the first five years the town was installing them. They were actually what's called a V three radio, which only has a point one watt radio. Our new meters, uh, that we currently have in the system are one watt, so ten times the strength. Um, there's still some thought with depending on where we set collectors, we still might be able to pick up some of the smaller, uh, lower wattage radios by putting external antennas on them. So we'll, that's what we'll probably working on or will be working on this next year is setting collector sites. We, uh, we're probably coming back with an I G A, but that's what they want us to do with Phoenix to put it on their radio tower there to base it on, uh, Seventh Avenue. Um, uh, the, the, the large radio tower site will be set off the side up, up there and we believe that'll be a good collector site for us. Um, yeah, it's been really giving us good data and the staff have been finding stuff and as we see it, we look at it, uh, weekly and daily sometimes. Uh, we're actually catching people early and giving them information and they're very appreciative of that. So. And we're hopeful to be able to pass that information off to customers too, so they can be more proactive in helping us conserve the town's water resources. And with that, um, last slide, just, if there's any general questions, again, I'll have to thank the staff, thank Nick, thank Ryan Hill. Um, thank all the field staff, our supervisors for all the work that they do to keep the town's utilities running.
Questions? Seeing none. Sean, thank you. Dick. We'll see you back in the hot seat again soon. Yeah, good luck with that too, Sean. And, and by the way, the, the beers come along nicely.
It may be going though, but I've been told it's not, uh, not permit.
Any further business?
See you in September.
See you in September.
Thursday, Thursday.
Thursday, oh, okay. That was short-lived vacation.